Just waiting for the stream to start. Stand by another minute, folks. Okay, we're having a little problem with the stream. So everybody, hold on. I gotta redo the stream. Everybody stand by. Okay. Having a technical difficulty. Everybody just please stand by.
Well, while we're standing by, I got a quick question. Item number seven says resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the general fund budget.
Wait, are we on?
We, the public is in, in the, we do have 29 attendees that are on the webinar. I'm just trying to get the YouTube stream going. It's, it's giving me a connection issue. Everybody just stand by while I, while I redo the connection to YouTube.
Okay. I have a question when we get to item number seven.
Okay. That's updated. Okay, we're gonna try this one more time.
Donna.
Nina.
Yeah, what, what's your question about number seven?
Um, you have to wait till we get to number seven.
Yeah, I'll wait till it.
Okay.
Nina, how are you?
I am good. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to be allowed to be like, you know, the media cameraman.
Nina, can you turn your camera on?
I can't. David, I asked him to.
You gotta give me a minute. I'm still having some technical.
Okay, okay.
The YouTube is not connecting for some reason.
Dave?
Yeah, give me a minute.
Are you sure we're not live?
We are live. We are live on Zoom. However, I cannot, the, the stream to our YouTube channel is not going. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get us live onto the YouTube, onto our YouTube channel now. For some reason, it's not connecting. That's, that's, I'm having a connection issue. Just stand by. Okay, I'm not sure what's going on here. I have to try to reset this again. Stand by, folks.
Maybe we can get Scott to lead us in Row, Row, Row Your Boat while we're waiting.
Yeah, I apologize. For some reason, I'm resetting the stream and it's still not, still not taking the connection. Just bear, bear with me one moment. I'm gonna try it one more time.
Dave, is there a way to post the message on YouTube so people will know that we're fighting with it?
Yeah, I can, I can only do, I can only do one thing at a time. So hang on one second.
Can I do though?
Anybody can post the message if they're logged into YouTube and they're on, on the, on the city council meeting.
Okay, I will try.
Yeah, because it's not streaming on the YouTube page yet, which is the challenge that David is having, we're not able to post a comment at the moment that we're having technical difficulties.
I was just able to post it.
All righty then.
All right, it looks like it's taking it now.
Nice job, sir.
Looks like we, it looks like we are live. I don't know what happened there, but sorry for the delay, folks. All right, we're live.
You're muted. Sorry, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first meeting of May. Apologies for the late start. There was a technical glitch. We couldn't get this YouTube stream going, so they beat the computer with a baseball bat a few times and.
Pretty much.
And finally got it going. So we got a lot to get to tonight, so let's get going.
Okay, sorry for the delay, folks. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trustin.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Counsel Richard Barrios. We now have a salute to the flag.
All right, Councilwoman Trustin, would you please lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So why don't we start with the city manager's report?
Good evening, everyone. In light of our full agenda, I just have one person reporting, and that's Mr. John McNally.
Good evening, everybody. And per Donna and per the agenda, I will try and keep it as short and sweet as possible. Normally, I would give our COVID update, but there has been a whole slew of updates related to COVID, almost all of it good, relatively speaking. So positivity rates are down and the governor is opening up a whole lot of activities. I will work with our PR department and communication teams to get a comprehensive update on what this means for all activities within the next couple of days up on our website and up on social media. But as I said, positivity rates are down and the governor is opening up a whole slew of things and lessening restrictions. So it's good news. The one thing we don't have real clarity on right now that's of most importance or utmost importance to at least the council is beach capacity. So we're still lying in wait with that. On other fronts, City Manager Gaden has had conversations with the owner of the foundation block, and we are pleased to report that that owner, Mr. Alpert and the Alpert family, has agreed to once again allow the city to have daytime parking on that lot. In addition to that, for the, well, it's for the upcoming, the upcoming season, no promises beyond that. But in addition to that, there is also a lot owned by that family between Laurelton and Lafayette Boulevards, and they have agreed to, for the first time ever, allow daytime parking on that lot as well. So folks may have noticed activity there. We have our street maintenance and beach maintenance crews leveling that out and putting fill in. That's what that's all about. So there will be, this summer, there will be several hundred additional spots that will be able to handle the daytime influx of parking with visitors that should greatly reduce the competition and strain on what is typical residential parking with, you know, for, within the city. That should help ameliorate some of that problem. So good news coming from me tonight. And that's the conclusion of my report unless there are any questions.
That is the conclusion of the manager's report tonight.
All right, so, all right, let's get to the meat and potatoes of it. Let's get to the public hearings.
Yeah, our first public hearing for this evening is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 229 East Park Avenue, street floor for an outdoor dining area for the neighboring health food smoothie store. If the proprietor is on the meeting, please use the raise your hand function so I can unmute you. There you are. One second. And Mr. Kelly, okay.
Hello. Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Vincent Guerone here. I'm here with Ben Ferrante as well. Hi, this is Dennis Kelly, the attorney for Golden Era LBNY, Inc. And here with me, as you already know, is Vincent Guerone, who owns Golden Era LBNY and Mr. Ferrante, who owns the premises in which Golden Era LBNY is a tenant. The tenant, Golden Era, is located between Long Beach and Monroe Boulevards on the north side of East Park Avenue at 227 East Park Avenue. It's the most eastern end of that line of stores that runs from west to east. And next to that premises is also another lot, which is known as, and you can actually look it up, 229 East Park Avenue, which is owned by Mr. Ferrante. Mr. Ferrante is also the landlord for Golden Era at 227 East Park. Golden Era is a health and nutrition store selling smoothies, health supplements, and prepackaged food. They're seeking an off-street parking variance or waiver for the lot next door, which is 20 by 100. And they are looking to put tables and chairs and a grill in the lot for the purposes of selling burgers, grilled chicken, smoothies, non-alcoholic beverages, and skewers. I have Mr. Guerone with us. Like I said, I'll ask that he be allowed to address the council and then Mr. Ferrante after him. And then obviously, we're prepared to answer any questions the council may have. Vinnie?
Yes, yes. Hello, this is Vincent Guerone again. Nice to speak to all of yous. Just did all in what Dennis Kelly just mentioned. We're looking to just expand on the store that's here and put out some outside seating so people could sit down, have a nice healthy meal, a smoothie, possible grilled chicken, as well as any kind of healthy foods, salads and stuff that we will be preparing here at Golden Era. As, oh, and also we'll be grilling some barbecue skewers as well as burgers and some grilled chicken.
Mr. Guerone, Dennis Kelly, can you tell the council a little bit about your background relative to Golden Era and where you are now and how this idea has developed?
Yes, we actually picked up, we bought from Rift. It was a health food store prior. My son was the manager there and he has a passion for this. So we, we purchased this and we started building this back in 2000, the beginning of 2020. Unfortunately, after the grand opening, within three weeks, all the gyms and all, you know, the restaurants, everything closed. However, we did stay open due to the selling of the vitamins and stuff like that. We were still considered essential. However, we took a very big, heavy hit. We, we stayed in business barely, but we, we did well. Mr. Ferrante worked with us and we weathered the storm, if you will, and things are opening up now. This was, this has been a dream of my son's and I'm still working to make sure we could fulfill, fulfill this and be a good, a good addition to Long Beach.
Mr. Ferrante, you have anything to say?
Uh, yeah, just to reiterate everything Vinnie said, obviously. You know, they opened up the business and literally three weeks later, everything got shut down. And for the past year, as things have been reopening, my experience, they own multiple properties in town, have different kinds of tenants. The the one that's still struggling the most, the types of businesses are these gyms and fitness type places. The restrictions are still pretty stringent on them and, and he struggled for an entire year. So I have this empty lot next door. I pay taxes on it, $7,000 a year. It's doing nothing. And Vinnie had an idea of, you know, maybe we'll do some outside stuff. I thought it was a great idea. Obviously, you got the gym on the corner over here, Hollywood, who just renovated and looks great and he's doing a nice job over there and you know, want to just contribute, be an asset to the community. I think healthy food, outside dining, there's nothing like it in town. You know, I think it would be a positive thing. So I'm here to lend my support to them any way I can.
Just so, Mr. President, just so the council's clear, I may have misspoken. It's, it's, it's going to have tables that can accommodate 32 people. I think I might have said 32 tables. Its hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. They will hire six to eight new employees who will be on shifts, obviously, working at the outdoor seating area. And obviously, Mr. Guerone has expressed to me that his hope is that the six to eight will be younger people who are actually living in Long Beach. And all these present employees are residents of Long Beach. So if the council has any questions, I think the three of us are ready to give you the best answers we can.
Dennis, this is Liz Trustin. I just have, just for clarification, you said 32 tables or 32 chairs?
Thirty, accommodate 32 people. Enough, enough tables and chairs, Councilwoman Trustin, to accommodate 32 people. I did miss.
That's eight tables on the document and.
Okay. That would be accurate.
All right, thank you.
The, the food that you're proposing to prepare at time, the skewers, the burgers, the chicken, the things like that, do you prepare that now currently inside the store or this will be new additions to what you do?
This, this would be new additions. We do have meals in the store, however, they're prepaid, pre-prepared.
Okay. And you said the, Dennis said the hours are gonna be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So you're gonna do breakfast as well?
Yes, we were proposing to do some egg sandwiches or.
Yeah.
Anything like that or protein pancakes in the healthy realm. We, we're all about health.
Okay, so do you anticipate then you'll, you'll be getting deliveries of supplies and stuff? And if so, how often do you anticipate getting a delivery?
Well, usually, we get deliveries now. It's usually about once a week.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the council members? Uh, just, oh, I got one more. So given your location, obviously being close to Long Beach Road, parking's a bit of an issue except for the center median. Just, you might want to give some thought to maybe, since you're gonna be adding 32 chairs, maybe putting in a bike rack or two in so people could potentially get over to you easier?
Absolutely. I discussed that actually with Ben just a couple of days ago and we're trying to figure a good spot for it and we'll definitely run that by everybody prior to, but, but definitely we're looking to put some bike racks there for sure.
Great, okay. So last call, any questions from the council? Seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
No hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing and so we don't have to keep the gentlemen waiting. Why don't we vote on this now?
Okay, this is for item, calendar item number two, which is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 229 East Park Avenue, street floor for an outdoor dining area for the neighboring health food smoothie store. We want to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes, good luck and look forward to trying your food.
I hope to see you, see you all soon. Please come in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great night.
You too.
All right, all right. Our second public hearing is for a resolution granting waiver for Wall Street parking requirements for premise 891B West Beach Street for an ice cream shop. If the proprietor is on, please reuse the raise your hand function. There you are. I will allow, there you are. Okay, Melissa?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Melissa. So can you tell us a little bit about what your business will be?
Yes, so Tipsy Scoop, we have two locations in both Brooklyn and Manhattan right now and are looking to open in Long Beach in the West End. We make liquor infused ice cream that is up to 5% alcohol by volume, inspired by different cocktails. So ice cream and sorbet that contains an alcohol content for those 21 and over only. And then we have some non-alcoholic options for kids and those who do not wish to consume alcohol.
Okay, so you just, probably just answered my first question. So you will cater to both the adults and the children and with the two, with two different products?
Yes.
Okay, so just for the edification of the people listening, the spot is the old codfish cowboy in the West End. So just so people know where we're talking about. And the, the, the ice cream, because I noticed, I'm looking at your little picture you got on our screen here, it's pre-prepared pints. Is the ice cream all pre-packed or do you scoop?
Sorry, I don't know how to change my picture.
No, that's okay.
So we actually have a few different revenue streams. So we sell our ice cream wholesale to different grocery retailers. So that's what my picture is of the pints of ice cream that are sold throughout the country to different grocery and specialty food retailers. And then we have our brick and mortar shops, which is what we would be opening in the West End of Long Beach. So we do the pints there, we would do ice cream by the scoop and some specialty sundaes, including some fun sort of beach themed sundaes as well.
Okay, great. Deliveries, do you anticipate, I assume you'll get deliveries. Do you, about how frequently do you anticipate getting deliveries?
Yes, so our freezer storage is actually in Bay Shore and they will be delivering to us on Monday mornings, anywhere from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Okay, so it sounds like once a week. All right, and it's looking at the paperwork. Looks like you're anticipating three employees?
Yeah, we should have three to four employees. It will be a seasonal business open from April through potentially December, depending on how the season ends up.
Okay, so you anticipate being seasonal, open seasonally?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. All right, any questions from the council members?
Um, nothing specifically. I know that we need to put our carding invoice into your system somehow, which I believe we can do following this meeting, as well as the fire department requirements. The requirements are a little bit different from New York City, so we're just catching up at this point, but.
Okay, sorry, I do have one. The, the ice cream that has the, the alcohol content, does it require a liquor license?
That is a great question. No, it does not. So we have been declared by New York State and also the TTB, which is the federal alcohol and tobacco borough as a non-beverage. So we're not required to have a liquor license, though we are required to have not required to have a liquor license, though we are required to have three callouts of alcohol on our packaging, which you'll probably notice from my picture here. So we have government warnings, alcohol warnings on the packaging and have to card end consumers to ensure that they're twenty-one and over if they are purchasing any of our alcohol infused products.
Okay, great. So I'll do one more call for the council members if they have any questions. All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
Yes, we do. Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy. Roy, go ahead and unmute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Sure.
Great, okay. John, I guess I'm a little upset because I had no idea this was serving alcohol, even though it doesn't require liquor license. The fact that they're not allowing minors to take it means that it has a potential of abuse. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but you know, when you put ice cream shop, nobody would know that this is an alcohol, you know, a place to get alcohol. And, you know, I'm part of the Coalition Against Underage Drinking and the worst thing for me is seeing something that, you know, kids would like that could get them intoxicated. And I just think it would have been better to say, you know, not just put it as an ice cream shop, but an ice cream shop that served frozen alcohol. Because people who are concerned about it, especially Judy Bining, has absolutely no idea this is going on. And John, you know, you know, I never speak against resolutions granting waiver of off-street parking, but this bothers me that nobody had any idea that there was alcohol involved here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Roy. Anyone else, Dave?
Yes, William Depper.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
I think we lost him.
I think we lost him. Hold on, let me look. He's on twice. That's might be why.
No, I'm not on.
Okay.
But William, will you still wish to speak?
Yeah, because I have the same concern that Roy Lester has because I see a lot of people, they'll take it and then they'll throw it in a garbage. There'll be kids out there who will grab it, then consume it. And also, does she have the letter to provide to you that states that you don't need a liquor license to serve it in her store?
Well, and actually, I'll, I'll jump in on that because when I found out about this this afternoon, I didn't realize also, I found out this afternoon that somebody I see ice cream is alcohol infused. I contacted our corporation counsel and they had dug into this as well. And what, what Ms. Tavas said is right, that they do not require a liquor license, just the special packaging that identifies that there is alcohol in the ice cream, but this does not require a liquor license.
Yeah, but the people they're going to hire, are they going to be eighteen or are they going to be twenty-one and over to be able to serve it to people and ask for their proof?
I'll let, I'll let the owner answer that.
So thank you for all the questions and apologies if anything was unclear. You know, there were, was limited space to say ice cream shop, but of course, we'll be transparent about the fact that it is alcohol infused ice cream. Tipsy Scoop has been in business since two thousand thirteen, one of the few first alcohol infused ice cream shops to come on the market. And we are both TTB approved, so federally approved and state approved as a non-beverage. So we do have letters from both New York State and federal approvals for formulas for each of our alcohol infused ice cream recipes as a non-beverage. So happy to share that with anybody who needs that as well. As a general rule, we do not need to hire people twenty-one or over to serve our ice cream, but we do only hire people twenty-one or over to serve our ice cream as they have, you know, more of a bartender knowledge of the different flavors and then are actually able to speak to the different flavors since they've been able to sample them. So as a rule for our business, we do that, though it's not required that we hire people twenty-one or over, if that hopefully answers the question. And just to, just kind of speak to the business in general, we do have several non-alcoholic flavors that we serve as well. We go over the top to sort of drive home that this is alcohol infused ice cream that's twenty-one and over only. I myself have a three-year-old. I would never want him to consume anything with alcohol. So we make sure that the kid-friendly options and the adult options are clearly labeled and, you know, packaged as such.
Ms. Tavas, do you, does Tipsy Scoop operate in any other capacity on the Barrier Island?
So we have a sort of pop-up cart in Atlantic Beach at a restaurant called Beginnings. And I believe are sold to a few specialty food retailers in Long Island that might be covered in the Barrier Island region, but that's the extent of our business in Long Beach to this point.
All right. Mr. Depper, you have any more questions or?
No, no, that's, that's enough of that.
All right, thank you. Liz?
I'm sorry, I just have, I have a quick question. Just, just out of curiosity, mostly, how much is a pint of ice cream?
So the cost for a pint of ice cream is twelve dollars a pint. So since it does contain alcohol, it is a little bit on the pricier side. Our non-alcoholic pints, I believe, are eight dollars a pint.
Okay. Dave, any more from the public?
Yes, Kate, Kate Torrey?
Okay.
Hold on one second. Go ahead, Kate. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. I, I have a question for the business owner. I'm curious, in the time, I think it's a very fun idea, but I have concerns as a nurse and a grandmother and a mother in terms of the possibilities of things that could happen. I'm just wondering, since two thousand thirteen, since you've been in business in multiple places, do you have any suits against you in regard to children or, or anybody doing the wrong thing in regard to this? It might be a very sort of out there question, but I'm just curious if there's been a problem with this at all?
No, Kate, thank you for asking because that's an important question to address. So our ice cream that is sold in grocery stores and in any of our brick and mortar locations is scanned with a barcode like a beer or wine. So anybody who is checking anybody out at the register is alerted to, you know, check for ID. So we haven't had any issues there. Again, the sort of regulations regarding food products that contain alcohol, because this is a new category, are quite strict with the labeling requirements. So we haven't had any issues where anybody twenty-one or under has purchased any ice cream containing alcohol.
Okay, has not necessarily purchased, but has consumed. You haven't gotten any reports of any people under twenty-one consuming your ice cream. I'm saying by mistake is, is what I'm, would assume, but you, you haven't gotten any kind of reports of that since two thousand thirteen?
No, no reports of that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was all.
Okay, so let's close the hearing and why don't we go ahead and move to the vote?
Okay, so this is with item number three in the regular calendar. This is a resolution granting waiver of off-street parking requirements for premise eight ninety-one B, West Beach Street, street floor for an ice cream shop. We want to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
I'd stay.
Councilmember Mandell?
At this time, I'm going to vote, and I have never done this on a variance application before. I think just because I first found out that this has alcohol at this meeting, I was actually going to make a motion to table to allow Long Beach aware and the West End neighbors to maybe do their research and move this to the next meeting to give everybody an opportunity to really explore this. But absent tabling it, I have to vote no at this time because I'm just finding out now about the alcohol content. Not commenting on the quality of the product. I'll probably be, be a customer, but in all fairness, I think we probably should give another two weeks to let it have a full dialogue. So at this point, if we're having a vote, I have to vote no.
Councilmember Truston?
Can, Mr. Barrios? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yep. Can we ask the applicant to send us some information regarding, or is it redundant because this is only the, the parking permit and we're going too deep into the woods?
Well, I think essentially, Ms. Melissa, how do you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
It's Tabs.
Tabs, okay. Ms. Tabs has basically laid out to you the requirements, I guess, of her operating her business, right? What you're voting on is the variance itself. Tabling it, there's no harm in tabling it and asking for supplemental information if that's indeed what you want. And to Councilman Mandell's point?
Provide that.
We can always have other people.
Yes, we can certainly provide that. We also have, you know, we're hoping for good things during this meeting. So we also have the food department approval plans as well. So we can send you all that.
So with that, would the council have a motion different than what the motion's currently on the floor?
I'll move to table.
Oh, hold on, hold on. We're still in the middle of this. Rich, would I have to have President Bendo withdraw his introduction of this item?
I'd recommend it, yeah.
President Bendo?
Okay, before I do that, Ms. Tabs, let me just ask, if we delayed us a couple of weeks to vote so people can get the additional information, will that adversely impact you?
Yes. We were hoping to open for Memorial Day weekend, so, yes. But happy to, happy to send any additional information needed, of course, and have also, as I said, gotten approval on layout plans from the NASA Health Department as well.
Got you. Ms. Tabs, we have our next meeting on the eighteenth. So you'll have time.
Okay, can I ask what is required to get together by then?
Scott, you wanted to say something?
I was just going to say what Mr. Barrios said, our next meeting is on the eighteenth. So that would give ample time. And my thought was it just gives an opportunity for anybody who wasn't aware that this product contains alcohol to research it. It's plenty of time for them to gather their thoughts and participate in the meeting on the eighteenth, and then we have a full dialogue and we can vote.
Is there any actual specific information, Councilwoman Truston, that you're looking for? So Melissa can prepare that?
No, I mean, I, because I read the whole documents, I knew that, and the title is Tipsy, kind of gives it away, that we should all have that opportunity if no one is fully aware. Because to me, it's like chocolate, alcohol chocolate. You can get that in the store as well.
All right. So Ms. Tabs, it sounds like the council would just like to have an opportunity for, for some of, some of the stakeholders in Long Beach to kind of comment or ask questions of you. So what we'll do is, once President Bendo and another motion is made, we can basically have this meeting on the eighteenth. And any questions outstanding will be raised, asked, answered, and then we'll have a full vote. So I don't think you have to prepare any documentation.
May I suggest, Donna, may I suggest that if the council has any additional questions that they would like to have answered, to send those to Rich right away so that he can get in touch with her and that she can be prepared coming to the meeting, us asking for things at the next meeting?
Great suggestion.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little concerned about timeline for opening for the summer in that case.
Well, Ms. Tabs, once we have the meeting on the eighteenth, assuming the council votes yes, then you'll be in time for Memorial Day weekend, right? So you should be okay. I think you should be okay, but if you're not, you can let us know.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
I just mean in terms of like construction and moving forward.
Not sure of a question. This is Councilman Delory. Ms. Tabs, I think the biggest concern that at least I have and others have is opening a seasonal business that has, when I'm looking at a picture called spiked, I'm looking at a picture called vodka. It's in the shape of an ice cream container. I think when there is alcohol involved in an ice cream container, it's my, I would like to know more detail of where have you operated before, in what community, how it was sold, and your, your requirements of the people that you will hire as far as, I imagine you'll be serving non-alcoholic ice cream as well. I think that's the biggest concern. I'd like to hear of the, from the community members in the West End specifically about any concerns about this as well. So I know your timing is critical, but I just think it's critical for, for us to have the right information as well. Thank you.
I have a, I have two questions or comments. First off is that your website, I found it extremely informative when I researched it over the weekend. I couldn't believe how many comments you had and I, it was just beautifully designed. I also, I saw that you have two locations, one in Brooklyn and one in New York City. So I was just curious to ask Rich Barrios if there was, in terms of the zoning board, they can grant certain permissions with conditions? Is the city allowed to do the same in terms of a business?
Well, remember, so this, this is just for off-street parking variance, right?
Right, so the business is happening.
Ms. Tabs, yeah, Ms. Tabs has already represented to you. And I agree that the operation of her business is completely legitimate. The only issue before the council is whether or not she satisfies the criteria for the off-street parking variance.
So that's what we're debating that, and so that's what we should be entertaining discussion on?
Correct.
To my point about tabling, while I agree, our jurisdiction is solely on the parking, I don't know if it's necessarily fair to the public and residents that there are certain organizations we know in Long Beach that have an interest in this area. And I'm not saying that we would necessarily be swayed by their position, but they should at least have an opportunity to present that position. I don't think two weeks is a hardship to delay this for a vote, which may eventually be a positive vote. But I, I think it's probably unfair to not have Western neighbors, which I'm assuming would have been present speaking on this and Long Beach aware. And I think we have an obligation to those entities to at least hear them and give them an opportunity. They may not show up in two weeks. They may not have an issue with this, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't give them that opportunity.
I, I, I understand your point and I think this is maybe a procedural issue that we could work on in the future. Because we, you know, this was posted on the website on Friday. So it obviously means that either us in the city or somehow need to notify the relevant parties in a more timely fashion, or maybe that's not what you're referring. But in terms of two weeks for a small business owner, that's an eternity, is my personal feeling.
We all have one vote. I suggest we kind of move along, do something one way or the other.
You're on mute, President Bendo. You're on mute, President Bendo.
All right, so Rich, I guess, since we're in the middle of the vote, do we have to complete the vote? Or, or Dave, I guess this is a
Well, President Bendo, as you control the floor, if you want to proceed with the vote, you can do so. If you'd like to withdraw that, you can do that as well.
And who seconded it? Councilwoman Tristen, so, okay. At this point, why don't we just finish the vote?
Okay, we're up to Councilmember Tristen.
I did a lot of, I looked into this and I'm going to vote yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay. Item passes.
Okay, good luck. Welcome to Long Beach. And we'll see you, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, our third public hearing is for a resolution granting waiver of all-street parking requirements for premise 935 West Beach Street for a psychic and mediation crystals and candle store. Now, if the owner of that business, yep, there you are. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hello. So why don't you tell us a little bit, now this is going in what used to be Rockin' Robins, so it's gonna be similar. So why don't you tell us about what you're gonna be doing?
All right, so yes, it is. It's definitely gonna be similar to Rockin' Robins. I'm going to be selling a variety of candles and crystals, tools for meditation, guidance. I'm also gonna be doing some psychic readings and tarot card readings also.
Okay. I guess, how many employees? Do you anticipate it just be you or?
It'll just be me.
Okay, and what do you think your hours will be?
My hours are gonna be from nine until nine.
Oh, long day. Okay.
Yes.
All right, and I guess I'll ask you to stay on the question, but deliveries, do you anticipate getting deliveries?
There'll be, no, there'll be no deliveries.
Okay. All right, do I have any questions from the council members? Liz?
Hi. I just have one question. And the bottom of your comments, it says that you have a, another business here in Long Beach?
Yes, I have an existing business already. I'm actually the psychic that is on 62 West Park Avenue.
Is that the one that's upstairs?
Yes, it is, on top of LB Social.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council members? All right, here are none. Dave, do we have any from the public? You're muted, Dave.
Sorry, none at this time.
Okay, let's close the hearing and let's move on to the vote.
Okay, so going on the regular calendar, this is item number four, resolution granting waiver of all-street parking requirements for 935 West Beach Street, street floor for a psychic and meditation crystals and candle store. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristen.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes, and good luck and
So much.
Welcome to the West End.
Yes, looking forward to it.
All right.
Okay, our next public, we're gonna, we're gonna jump, we're gonna
Jump to number?
We're gonna call the public hearings out of order, folks. So we're gonna jump to the next public hearing we're gonna call is the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations, building code, electrical code, and plumbing code.
All right. So is someone on the staff speaking on that, Donna? You're muted.
Sorry, Scott Kimmons is on.
Okay.
Okay, Scott.
Well, if he's talking, we're not hearing him.
Scott, are you on the phone connection? Scott, go ahead and unmute.
You got me now, Dave?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I can speak to the permit fees, and I think Dave is gonna speak to the licensing fees because that's under the clerk. Back last summer, the city manager had asked us to research our fees and compare them to other neighboring communities. Mindy Abrams set out and made a very nice spreadsheet. She contacted all the municipalities in the area and found out that a lot of our fees, our building permit fees, our plumbing fees, our certificate of occupancy fees were much lower than our neighboring communities, which, I mean, obviously, we knew that. A lot of our fees haven't been raised in, in 20 years, some of them 11 years. It's been a long time coming. Plumbers come into our office and say, you guys are the cheapest around. We love doing work in Long Beach. And, you know, the research was done and we were pretty much the lowest. And after meeting with Mindy, we made some recommendations to raise some of our fees, not going as high as some other municipalities, trying to keep it fair for the residents, but at the same time, keeping it fair for the city. And that was what was presented to the city manager and the council that is in the agenda tonight.
Okay. You gonna add anything, Dave?
Well, my portion of it is the mercantile fees, which covers pretty much anybody who does business in the City of Long Beach with a few exceptions. But, you know, not only all the storefronts, but also the, a good lion's share of it is our contractors, the home improvement contractors, the electricians, plumbers, you know, HVAC contractors. We haven't raised any of these. We kind of did it in two halves the last time. Last time we raised these was in 2016. We raised, I believe, some of the, some of the contractors, and before that, I believe it was 2014, we had raised some of the, some of the business licenses, so we're about due.
Okay. Any questions from any of the council members?
I just have a general comment to Mr. Kimmons and Mr. Frazier and Mindy and everybody else that worked on this. What was presented was very thorough. And I just want to thank them for that. I'm glad that they spoke about the length of time, how long it's been since we did raise. So it's just a general thank you for the effort.
Yeah, Mindy did a great job and showed us, A, how much lower we were than everyone, municipalities around us, and in some cases, we'd, some of these hadn't been raised since the very early 1990s. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's time. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, Dave, any from the public?
Not at this time.
All right, so let's close that hearing.
Okay. Our next public hearing is the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park. Now, I believe we have a motion on this item.
Yeah, I'm gonna motion to amend the item with the new one that has been posted on the city's website. It was posted on Friday, I believe.
Yes.
So it's been up there for a while. So I'm gonna make a motion to replace the the resolution with the new one posted on the website.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Just wanna ask, the, the one that's posted on the website, it's lowering the cost of the family plan and other plans, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got the right, so I, yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristen.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
And folks, it has been posted on the website. If you go on to the city council, the council meetings page, there's a link there under the meeting information page and also under the agenda page, you'll see the amendment file listed right there.
Right, and just to give you some background on why this is like this. As you may know, there's been a big push. The original fees that were being proposed were being proposed based on 50% beach capacity, which meant basically the residents of Long Beach, because there's a good chance we might have had to do residence only, we're gonna have to pick up the burden of the costs of the entire beach for the summer, when often much of the revenue comes from non-residents. As some of you may know, the last week, week and a half, there's been a big push to increase the beach capacity. I've done two press conferences in the last week with the county executive, calling on the state to open us at 100%. Done a lot of, same with Senator Kamitski and, and others. We've been working with them. We've been beating up on the state. So we think we're going to be able to go above 50%. The other thing is now that we also have the electronic beach passes, that will allow us to spread the crowd out a little better. So anybody that travels up and down the beach may know the West End beaches on the weekends are packed, the East End beaches are packed, but often the beaches in the center of town have plenty of room for people to come on with the electronic beach passes. We will now be able to sell passes on to specific beaches on the weekend. So we felt that the 50% was being overly conservative and we were going to be, quite frankly, banging our residents on beach fees that we felt we were gonna be able to bring non-residents on to the beach, even under the current conditions. We'd be able to bring non-residents on to the beach and, and since they would be picking up some of the costs, we could lower it on, on the residents. So that's kind of a, an explanation of why this is being replaced with the, with the fees you see now, which are lower than what were originally proposed. So with that, are there any questions from the council members? Or comments? See ya none, Dave, from the public.
Yes, we have Kathleen O'Leary.
Okay. Hi, Kathleen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I haven't looked at the new fees, but I've had this thought for quite a long time. Cedar Beach charges non-residents $20 to park, and they've been doing that for at least 15 years. And Gilgo Beach charges $20 to park for non-residents. So, you know, I, I really feel that if, since there is a deficit from the fact we had nobody on the beach, you know, fewer people on the beach last year, I, I think it would be a good place to raise fees. And we're, we're kind of underselling ourselves. We're not a state park. We're just a private beach, and all these other private beaches are charging at least $5 more per person than we are.
Well, most of the other beaches charge for the carload typically, where we charge by the individual, if you buy a day pass, or obviously if you buy a seasonal pass, then it just covers you for the whole season. So we kind of have different pricing structures. As, as you well know, we don't have parking lots per se where we're charging people to park so we can control capacity that way. You know, we basically, we have to control it at the beach entrances. So, so we have a little bit of different structure. I mean, it's, it's, it's worth noting that non-residents pay basically double what residents pay for everything, except a daily pass. Daily pass is $15 for non-residents, 12 for residents, but most residents, very few residents buy daily passes, you know, everybody buys a seasonal.
Am I still on?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, you know, I, I know you were discussing beach parking on private property earlier. I live in the East End. A few years ago, there were people out with signs, you know, asking to park people's cars for 10 bucks. That's how bad the parking gets. So isn't there a way to monetarize the parking that's being given away for free?
Well, street parking is, is a different story. That's, that's a whole separate topic that would come into the parking meter issue, which is a separate issue, which we'll talk about at a different time. There is talk of, there's been some talk of using the, the parking garage at the Long Island Railroad as, as a pay garage, and then, you know, people would either, you know, easily walk down to the beach or we could run a shuttle. That's something that's been in discussion. But other than that, you know, there, there are no other parking lots the city controls. I mean, the Outports have graciously offered to let us use that, the foundation block, but they will not allow it to be a paid lot. They require it to be free.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Dave, who's next?
Hey, next is Mary Volsevich.
All right.
Mary, go ahead, unmute.
Okay, I have a question concerning the beach passes, which I brought up several years ago. And I was told that people that are on social services, one way or the other, that the families, if they showed proof that they could get beach passes, you know, no charge, that I, and I, I agree with that 100% because some of them go along with young children after the attendants leave, and that's where we have our lifeguards jumping in after hours. So I wonder, is that still the policy of the city?
I'm not sure who can, who's, Donna, you know who can answer that?
Mary, thank you for the question. It's a very good question. We did talk last time about looking at the, the residents that get like free lunches and working that through. So that will come at a later date, but yes, we are looking into that. We have to do some research with the schools and, and, and get that moving forward.
Would your, excuse me, Donna, would your, would your housing authority know, like, specific area, let's say Channel Park? They, they know who's getting assistance, so I believe.
Channel Park as well, but if they have children too, that we reach out to the schools.
Okay. All right.
But I just think, I think, I think if you do that, Donna, it prevents,
you know, God forbid, some, some young kid going down and drowning.
Yes.
Hello, all right, well, thank you. You're looking at that.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Mary. All right, Dave, who's next?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Hey, John.
Hey.
When Ina gave her report a couple of weeks ago, she went through the numbers, but she was, had the projected numbers that are less now because of the changes. Do you remember?
No, the original, her original projection was based on 50% capacity.
No, it wasn't. No.
Yeah, it was.
50%, no, we couldn't, her original projection was 4.2 million or 4.4 million.
Well, she's on, she's on, I'll let her answer.
All right.
Good evening. How are you, Roy?
Okay, Ina.
Uh, yeah, um, it was based on the original, original one when, we talked about this multiple times, right? The most recent one was based on 70, on 100% capacity for the residents and on 50% capacity for the non-residents. Scott, does that answer your question?
No, that's what I thought. It was 100%. And at that
For the residents.
For the residents.
For the residents 100% because residents were not precluded from attending the beach last summer. But for non-residents, we assumed 50%.
Well, you had as total non-residents, a receipt of 1.909. Now you're saying that that will double? That's on 4/20, when you put the charts up, I have the chart in front of me. You said for residents, you projected 1.909, 1.9 million. Total residents, you projected 2.39 million. Are you telling me now that the residents was only at 50%?
The actually, the chart that you're looking at now is the chart that supports this new price structure and that's at 75%.
Only 75, the total non-residents?
So, like I said, we talked about this multiple times.
No, no, Ina, Ina.
Roy, let me finish. I'm answering the question. Let me finish. The regional resolution listed as number six on agenda assumes 50% capacity. This amended one assumes 75% capacity and the 75% capacity, the number is 1.9.
So if they give us, if they give us 100% capacity, then we're talking about 25% more on that 1.9, which is $500,000 extra.
Your math is about right. Yes.
So that would give us 4.8 million for the beach. But we've only, in the budget, we're only talking about the budget, you're only assuming 75%.
Roy, I think that we're jumping a little bit ahead of ourselves with that. We're going to be talking about the budget later.
So, so what, Roy, your question is right now, we are not at 100% capacity. We are spending a budget, so it was at 75% capacity.
The projection on the budget.
Right. Our projection is at 75%.
That's what I'm trying to find out. Okay.
If we, if it goes to 100% after the budget has passed, we can do an amendment, but it's at 75%.
Okay, so the 1.9 was 75, but the 2.39 was at 100%, correct?
If it's a, the residents, what she was saying was, we always said the 100% was residents. It's the non-residents that we're concerned about.
Okay. All right. I was just asking because of the, the chart that you put out on the 20th, had us losing, I think it was 1.1 million on the beach?
Yes.
Yeah. So as it stands right now, the projection on the budget is 4.2 million income on the beach. So if at 100%, we'll probably be at 4.7 million.
That is what we know.
Okay. All right.
But that is all we can do right now is hope.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to understand the numbers. That's all.
Okay.
I wanted to, I wanted to make this point anyway, which is, Roy, you've been focusing on the non-residents at the change from 50% to 75% based on the information that we've gotten from the state, which is a very fair and responsible and conservative assumption. However, on the resident side, in 2020, the residents passes sales went up to 33,809 passes. So that means every single man, woman and child and new baby had a family resident pass in 2020. This was also an 8,000, 8,000 real number increase versus 2019. So while we balance the 75% for the non-residents, our, 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 our projection for the residents is slightly, slightly aggressive because it will go down because of the electronic beach passes and so on this year. So Ina has done an amazing job in providing scenario after scenario to evaluate this situation. None of us have a crystal ball, but our responsibilities and through this process has been to to evaluate the beach park as a P and a separate P and L where, where revenue should be more than expenses. But unfortunately, they're not still, but we're getting there and I think she's done a tremendous job. And we were, I feel confident that we're all fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility to move us in the right direction to get this beach park operation net positive.
Yeah, that's, that's true Karen. I'm just trying to figure out what the numbers are based on. That was all my question was. I'm not saying she's not doing a tremendous job. I just was asking what they were based on. Thank you.
Yeah, that, yeah, this is tough stuff. I'm happy to talk with you about it. It's, but we're getting there. And this, and again, this, we don't have a crystal ball. So this process.
No one does.
This process should be done every year and I really am excited that the council now has the opportunity to and responsibility to make sure that we again operate in net positive for the beach.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Roy.
Thank you.
All right, Dave. Anyone else?
Yes, next is William Depper.
Okay.
Yeah, I live across from the empty lot that down by Laurelton. And I'm just concerned that all those cars there and the heavy traffic. I have many friends that live at the Old Hoppin Manor, which is the assisted living facility. And a lot of them use rollers, have difficulty walking. They cross the street because they are allowed out. A lot of them smoke. They do go up on the ramp, on the boardwalk. And a lot of kids are around here too. A lot of children. There's a bus stop here. You know, so I don't know. I, I hope you'll take it more into consideration. But also what's it going to be like at night around here with cars parking there? Is it going to become like a lover's lane, especially with the tipsy ice cream? So, you know, I'm saying, I'm thinking of everything and I live right across from it. So I mean, if I see something, I am going to report it and probably call the police department. But I mean, before it, you know, escalates and becomes a problem, you know, maybe look at all things first.
Mr. Depper, the parking lots will be monitored on a regular basis and then they will be closed at night. And so we are aware of the different things that can go on. One of our major concerns is parking. And so one of the agreements with the Outbursts is that we would monitor those lots on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. I figured you would. I think you guys are doing, you ladies and gentlemen are doing like so much to better Long Beach, get the figures back and hopefully bring Long Beach back on top.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Dave. Anyone else?
No, that's it. Mr. O'Leary, you have spoken already. You can't speak twice. Sorry.
On a different issue, I can't speak?
This is the same, though we're still on the same issue. You already spoke on this item.
I did?
Yes, you did. You were the first speaker on this item.
All right. I forgot. It's been so long.
Okay. She's, she's ambitious. Okay, so was it, there was no one else, Dave?
Nope, that was it.
All right. So let's close that hearing.
Okay, our last hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2021 and June 30th, 2022.
Okay, is, are we going to hear from Ina again?
If you want to.
Everybody wants to.
Dave, is there a way to put my PowerPoint on, on your screen?
One moment.
Thank you. While Dave is doing that, I just wanted to start with saying that the budget is posted on city's website. And tonight, we're going to be discussing it. But I will also want to encourage people who have concerns and maybe shy to ask questions tonight. Or something would occur to them at a later day. You can reach out to my office and with your questions and we are cataloging them and posting them also online. So hopefully after I'm done with this, there will be no more questions. This, Dave, go to the next page, please. Okay, so this page summarizes budget by fund. It has three years of budgets and shows fiscal year 20, fiscal year 2021 adopted budget as well as fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. It's comparing all these years is a bit like apples to oranges because 2019, 20 was, the budget was prepared without the world knowing of COVID. The 2021 adopted budget was already prepared with COVID in our minds and with understanding that a lot of operations of the city will be reduced. And then 2022 budget now is prepared with the most ambitious, with the more ambitious plans and more hopes towards reopening. You could see here, all these years for operating funds as well as for internal service funds. And I will address each of one and one of those on the following slides. Could you please turn the page? Okay, so general fund, expenses in general fund when compared to fiscal 2021 adopted budget are over $10 million higher. That's huge, right? So why, why 10.4 million dollars? I listed here major, major categories that add up to approximately $10 million, of which the most material one is repayment of the 4.25 million principal plus another $64,000 of interest on a deficiency note. That note was issued in May of 2020. It was issued to mitigate COVID-related revenue shortfalls. That note cannot be converted into long-term debt. It has to be paid back to the note holders no later than the end of the second fiscal year after the year it was barred in. So for us, it has to be repaid before June 30th, 2022. The full repayment is budgeted in this budget. Another pretty material item here is social security. It's 2 million, the budget for FICA payments in the general fund are about $2 million over what was budgeted in 2021 budget. We, city took advantage of the CARES Act. CARES Act allowed allowed employers to defer their FICA payments, employer portion of FICA payments through December 31st of 2020. Everything that was deferred now has to be paid out in two installments, equal installments 50% in, by the end of calendar 2021. So it's our fiscal 2022 and another half in the next fiscal year. So that adds up to $2 million variance because 2021 was lower and 2022 now is higher. Contingency increased by 760,000. 500,000 of that is due to increase in termination salaries. I have a slide that will cover that. And another 260,000 is in, is what we're budgeting for the increase in a part-time salaries. We have a tremendous part-time workforce that is currently paid less than minimum wage and we're striving to bring their wages up to the federal state minimum wage standard. So this amount is budgeted as one lump sum in contingency. And once fiscal year will, once this budget is approved, we will work with the departmental managers for those departments that have part-time employees that are paid under minimum wage salaries. We will work with them and we will process those increases and we'll be transferring appropriate amounts of money into those departments. You will see resolutions for the transfers at your city council meetings in the future. Okay, increase in retirement cost for the New York State Retirement Plan. The increase is $400,000 and for the police, it's another, it's a separate plan for the police and fire. The increase is 650,000. This is based purely on the invoices that I received from the state pension plans. They send us estimates and these estimates are actually determined by whoever actuaries are working for them. Dave, if you don't mind, please move to the next page. Okay, I also worked with our attorneys who are responsible for procurement of the various insurance policies for those, for those risks where the city is insured. And that was quantified and the total is 1.2, 1,274,000. So basically 274,000 dollars more than what was budgeted last year. So basically 2021 was under budgeted because also we worked with the brokers, but they were too optimistic. So the actual expense for 2021 is somewhere around 1,150,000. Okay. There is an overall increase in a recreation department expense, $451,000. And that is due to the fact that our budget for 2021 in that department was much lower than in prior years. So this is basically bringing it back to historical actual in recognition of our optimistic hopes for COVID to be over. Another item point is additional budgeted vacancies for new hires. About $680,000. It's IT director, it's contract management and procurement director, deputy city manager and HR director. Those vacancies are budgeted for in a 2022 budget and those were discussed with the city manager. And some of them are clear. We know about the IT issues and currently IT is run by one person of the city, which is not acceptable for any entity with $100 million of revenues. So there are also additional less material increases in expenses that are partially mitigated by decreases in other categories. But what I just listed, what I just listed on those two slides, those are the most material ones and those that they add to about $10 million. Next slide. I'm not sure how well you could see that slide, but it's also posted on the city website. It shows how I come up with the amount that we need to budget for the termination salaries. So what's, what's budgeted for the termination salaries is, has two parts to it. One part is, we already know there is a list of about, I don't know, 80,000. One part is, we already know there is a list of about, I don't know, eighteen maybe. Um, former employees who had retired and they are receiving their payouts in um um installments, right? Some of them are in three equal installments, some are bi-weekly um until the whole liability is paid out. So um, I don't know again if you can see it well, but maybe you can trust me. The total overall amount for all those people, you could see like there is no more probably than twenty here, uh was about ten million dollars. And um of that ten million dollars, about two point three million dollars will be paid out in twenty twenty two. Some of it was paid out in previous years, some of it will still be paying into the future years past this next year budget. Then the next uh three columns, they show which funds will be responsible for paying that out. Um, in addition to that, so that's one part of the termination salaries. In addition to that, I worked with the union uh leaders and trying to assess uh their knowledge of um the retirement expectations they have uh from their members and that was added to this um uh schedule as well. Um, usually as a rule of thumb, uh whatever is budgeted for termination salaries um is not enough for the payout. But um that's three about this, here it's a little bit over three million dollars. Three million eighteen thousand for the general fund and that is a five hundred thousand dollar increase from what was budgeted in fiscal twenty twenty one. By the way, using the same methodology.
You know, I just want to make one comment. Um, so that everyone that cannot see it, please know that this schedule is as Ina said before, is on the website. So you can go and look um and ask, ask any questions that you may have to Ina's office or you can send the questions to city managers. And we will get those answers for you and also post the answers, the question and the answer on the website. Thank you.
Sure. Dave, do you mind moving it to the next line? So this uh slide is a chart. It shows um how your tax dollars are spent. Um, you could um see the major categories, the most um um, the 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 most um expensive, the most costly um operation for the city um is the public safety, uh which includes um police and fire departments. Um, and then that follows by the recreation and um by um total economic opportunity development and transportation at three percent. Um, categories like um home and community service is ten percent and that includes sanitation, street maintenance, things like that. Um, you could see that the total employee benefits are, city spends twenty five percent of its total uh budget on employee benefits. So um that that's a very um, that's very large sum and that uh um shows um that the providing benefits and uh giving all this uh fringes is uh very expensive. Pension plans, as you saw on previous slides, just pension plan. Um, course went up between two pension plans by a million dollars. Um, and medical uh premiums go up every year. So um that that's twenty five percent of our budget. Another very high um category this year especially is the inter-fund transfers. What inter-fund transfers uh mostly mean, it's a transfer from the general fund um and other funds as well, water and sewer from operating funds to the debt service fund. And risk management fund for the um mostly for the debt service. Um, so um this year it's higher than it's um in previous years because of that four million two hundred and fifty thousand dollar um payout that will be funded from the general fund. Dave, do you mind moving it to the next slide? Okay, so let's talk about revenues right now. Revenue projections were based on prior years. Um, historical actual amounts as adjusted by relevant assumptions. So we looked at the prior year um actual revenues collected and we um took into consideration where the city is right now, where the world is right now and um adjusted those accordingly. Uh, we don't want to be too optimistic um because that will result in city running out of cash at some point during the year. At the same time, we don't want to be very conservative because we are very cognizant of how much um we're asking uh city residents to um to pay to the city in taxes. Okay, um, I will go now through the revenue increases, just like I went through them. Um, expense increases, also um area by area beach park. We anticipate six hundred and ten thousand dollars more in this budget than we did in twenty twenty one. This might further, further increase if um we get better um information on a hundred percent beach capacity. Um, in that case, um if that will be determined, that we'll be able to open our beaches at a hundred percent, um that will create um an opportunity for us to not increase uh property taxes by the percentages um that you see in this budget will adjust that to reflect uh that um beach revenues will be collected at higher amounts. So um tha- that will probably bring um um the increases um under six percent. In property taxes increases will be somewhere between five and a half to six percent. Um, New York sales and use tax projected increase of three hundred thousand dollars. Nasdaq bond sales tax projected increases two hundred twenty six thousand dollars. State aid mortgage tax projected increase is two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Transportation related grants projected increase of eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, federal transportation department um has their own um COVID uh related uh programs and acts and uh um a large portion of that is um what we anticipate as the result of that um of those grants. Um, city operates point lookout bus loop and uh we are projecting to get a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars more this year. It's just uh to collect what what's in ar- in arrears, we're working with the county um to get the the previous couple of years that haven't been paid, um to have them paid. Um, Dave, do you mind? Okay, continue, revenues. Bond anticipation notes will be issued to cover termination pay, just like termination pay had increased by five hundred thou- by five hundred thousand dollars. The what we're gonna bar to pay for the termination pay will also increase. Um, and that is um including uh uh we can bar for the fringe benefits and that as well. So that's five hundred to five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, fund balance appropriations, we are planning to um have at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty one. Uh, we will be reach, will receive uh three point seven million dollars from the federal government in the stimulus. And we were able actually through COVID and all to build a little bit of the fund balance. So um as sad as it will be, we'll have to use a million dollars of that. And that will be four point six seven one million. The remaining budgetary gap will have to be addressed via increase in property taxes. So current proposed budget assumes total levy of fifty point five million compared to forty six point six million for fiscal twenty twenty one. Again, that number might be hopefully adjusted based on what we will hear about the beach capacities. Um, I am done with the water, with the general fund. Dave, do you mind to move to the water fund?
Um, before you move on, one of the things I want to make sure that everybody is aware is that we are borrowing, but we're not borrowing for just general expenses. We're only borrowing money for termination pay. And that's very important. So when we say we don't want to borrow, we have to borrow for termination pay, not for general expenses.
Yeah, that's a very good point and uh uh for for those who were able to see that termination pay slide um the levels at which we uh face termination payouts when 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 we have twenty people receiving over ten million dollars, that's um tha- that's hard for the city to absorb. So um, Dave, do you mind moving to the water fund? Okay, um, so water uh fund revenue and expenses are up two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Um, water billings um will be up about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That assumes four percent increase in water rates. Um So um why increase in water rates and why increase in expenses? Uh, there are employees of uh Department of Public Works that were historically all charged to the general fund, but they actually split their time. About forty percent in general fund and thirty percent in water and thirty percent in sewer fund. It really aligns on the expenses and how uh city residents are paying taxes and fees to the um actual expenses of the city and in which funds and which department city um actually incurs them. So it uh will uh move those um salary budgets, those thirty percent um of the salaries to water and sewer funds. Um What I also want to mention now, um I didn't mention it when we talked about the general fund. Uh, we um very carefully reviewed all the um chargebacks. Um, and we looked at all the grants available. So this year budget is prepared with anticipation of those employees whose salaries will be covered by the grants. Um, they they're not budgeted in the general fund, so that alleviates that um that additional burden. And uh we did it only for those grants where we have assurances uh that there will be collections. So um that that um the next page, Dave. Sewer fund, um basically same story, increase of two hundred ninety seven thousand. Um, there's no increases um if for the sewer rates um a- and the percentage, the the sewer rates are collected as um as as a percentage of the water rate. But because uh they are um their percentage, a hundred and thirty percent of the water rate, so four percent increase in water uh rates will cause uh the corresponding increase in the sewer rates as well. And again, um, this is um uh their personal was and um associated uh um that uh associated fringe benefits um that are affiliated with these increases um as well as other um smaller material items um of increases in those in the water and sewer fund. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, um, I guess I just uh just want to confirm one thing because you showed that one slide that had some very large payouts. Uh, we we now uh before those payouts are made, unlike the previous, they're now checked by independently. Correct to make sure that they now comply with the code?
Um, yeah, so actually on a going forward basis, uh I anticipate the situation improve. Um, because um in a um arbitration, in the interest arbitration, now the payouts to our PBA members um are all capped at two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, so what we see here is uh what uh for the retirees that retired before that
Right.
um took place. Um, and uh we we in certain cases, um um in certain cases, we do send it to the um uh to the independent forensic auditors. Um, then not not all um separation payments, some are lower. And um not all of them warrant this, so you probably don't see some that were twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars and were paid out with in one lump sum. Uh, but those larger ones, we we get um somebody else uh besides us. We do the due diligence uh check in my office, but we also send it for additional reviews.
Okay.
And and you know, we're we're obligated to pay those, obligated by by a country, right? Um, we are uh obligated to pay because we, this is a part of our um collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Okay, so uh that was a lot to to ingest, so uh Dave, why don't we uh open it up to comments from the from the public?
Okay, first is Kate Tormey.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kate.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to say, Ina, that that was really beautifully presented and very transparent. And I understood it and it was wonderful and I want to give you a lot of credit. You have a lot of value just putting that together and making it understandable to the public and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right, uh, anyone else, Dave?
Yep, next is Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
Hi, John. Um, John, it's a hundred eighty page document and I think asking people to ask questions about it in three minutes is a little unrealistic. Um, but you know, I I have a bunch of questions prepared and I'll do what I can. Um, first of all, where would I find what Kate, what uh Ina was just talking about the the charts?
You, are you talking about the payout charts?
All the charts she just had.
He means the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, the PowerPoint presentation will be posted on the website.
Oh, okay.
You just said, one of the things you just mentioned was that the, how large the budget book was. But the budget itself is not that many pages. What we did to be more transparent this time out is that what we showed is what each department does. We showed uh trends within the city. We also put in the back a glossary, so anybody reading the budget and had questions about the terms, they could see that. We also put in where we use acronyms. They can understand what the acronyms are. So the budget itself that we're talking about tonight is not a hundred and eighty pages.
And can I add something to you, Donna? Um, so Roy, I don't want you to rush through all your questions. Um, I mentioned in the beginning of uh the presentation that uh you should please feel free to send uh questions to Donna's office or mine. Uh, we will post them, catalog and post them and answer them. And we will give you credit as a person who asked them on that website. So we'll be completely transparent and nothing will be lost. Um, just uh you can go through wherever we can go right now in three minutes and the rest will be addressed properly as well. Please brush the short.
Okay, started my watch. Okay, um Donna, first of all, I will say it's the most transparent budget I've seen. But the more transparent it is, the more questions I have because now I can get into the nitty gritty. So, you know, I guess there's a a cost that comes with everything. Um, the first question and and I will ask all my questions, try to get rid of them. Um, there was money left over that we were owed for. Um, there was money left over that we were owed for Sandy. We had spoken about it before, it was about three million and you had talked about it at one point, using it to pay off the four point two million. Did we ever collect that? What, you know, basically what happened? Then the three point six seven million we're getting from the late federal stimulus package, I didn't see that anywhere in the budget. Is it in the budget yet? And, okay, and we're taking four point six seven million out of our fund balance. Is that going to deplete the fund balance completely? And, um, on that particular note, we only owe, uh, four point three million. Uh, where's the other three hundred thousand going? Um, the, under the bus fees, we only, we collected a hundred twenty-five thousand less than last year's budgeted amount and a hundred sixty-four thousand less than the actual collection for two thousand eighteen. What are, we are anticipating collecting a hundred twenty-five thousand less. What are those numbers based on? Because I couldn't figure out what. Okay, when we're talking about the ice arena, we see, we're anticipating an income of six hundred eight thousand. But we were going to do an RFP on the ice arena because we're, right now, we're talking about almost losing money. And you've reduced the amount we're going to spend on gas and electric by sixty-five thousand. And the building and equipment repairs for the entire building and all the equipment only comes out to seven thousand a year, which is about five hundred a month. I don't see how that's, how we can ever do that. So it seems to me that the ice arena will continue to lose money and I'm just wondering what happened to the IFP. Um, as of, also, uh, as of March thirty-first, we had only received five hundred sixteen thousand of the three hundred, uh, the three million one hundred fifty-two thousand that was anticipated for the state aid per capita. I'm wondering what's happening with that. Um, and then it's under, let me see, we only received seven hundred thousand in state aid for bus operations and in two thousand eighteen, we received nine hundred thousand. And last year we were scheduled for eight hundred fifty-eight thousand. So I'm wondering why we're losing, you know, we've lost like a couple of hundred thousand on that.
Roy, that's your time.
Okay, that's what I see. I mean, there's just too much on this budget to try to do it in three minutes, but I figured it'd stop me.
Did, did you write all your questions down?
Oh, yeah, I have four pages.
Send them to us because you were reading those questions kind of fast. Um.
Three minutes, Donna.
I understand. So can you email those questions? One question I can answer for you right now is about the art ice arena RFP. Um, the goal of the RFP was to have some, uh, an establishment come in over the ice arena and its operations. The ice arena RFPs that we received, they wanted to take it over, but they also wanted us to pay them a fee every month for taking it over. And that was not the intent. And so we're going to go back to the drawing board so that, um, just as the tennis, uh, courts, they were taken over, they run the operation and they pay the city, not that the city pays them to take it over. But your other questions you read so fast, could you send those to us?
Mr. Lester?
He, he muted himself.
Yes.
Can you send those questions into the city manager, Mr. Lester?
Yes.
I was able, Donna, I was able to, um, to write some of them down. Uh, probably a few of them I can, um, answer. But then there were a lot that was really asked so fast that I did not even manage to write it down. I think Roy asked about three point six seven million dollars of the stimulus and he asked why it's not in the budget. It's not in the budget because we anticipate receiving it in this fiscal year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this will, um, fall into the fund balance this year. We don't think we're going to use it this year in operations. So the number that you see, four point six seven million dollars is inclusive of three point six seven. Um, I'm not sure, Roy, you can look at it like the bu- that the budget, you have to look holistically, right? So just because we're only paying down the, uh, bonds of four point three, or the deficiency note of four point three million dollars, you're asking where the rest is going to? Well, it's in the budget. We had other increases in expenses. And, uh, there are two pages in, uh, this document that I presented today. Um, so, um, that, that's, um, should explain that. Um, you asked about the state aid and, uh, why won't we receive five hundred thousand dollars, a little bit over it? Um, to date, um, so the state, uh, usually pays it in two installments. We receive majority of it, uh, towards the end of May, beginning of June. Uh, that's why you, uh, don't see it yet because we didn't get it yet and we're not scheduled to get it yet. Um, and frankly, um, I don't think that I can give you good answers to the other questions because, um, you went through them so quickly and they were so loaded uh, that it'd be much, um, it would, will be much more meaningful for you to email them to us and we'll post your questions and answers on our website.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
John, you're muted.
Sorry, I, uh, so there'll be one of the, there'll be another hearing too, so Roy will have another opportunity as well. Uh, but I saw Eileen pop up, so I'm going to assume Eileen's next. Yes, we do, Eileen.
Very good, thank you. Um, I have two comments, but one of them is about salaries. Will I have another opportunity to speak after I do this question?
Three minutes.
All right, let me ask this one. In the charts that Ina had, I know that you are capping retirement pay in the future. But in the big numbers on that list, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar payouts, have you looked at those to make sure that no one is getting a hundred percent of their sick days, vacation days, et cetera?
Yes, they have an outside group looking at that.
That's for the future. I'm talking about the big numbers now for this.
I'm waiting for you to finish your question.
Okay, all right, my next question is, um, for the police. You mentioned there was an increase of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this budget. I think we only have about sixty-five police officers, so that's ten thousand dollars per person. And that's just the increase. Now, I understand that this is, um, contractual. But it is getting just beyond affordable for any of us to give this kind of big payout. So that's just a comment. I don't know if you can respond to that, but. Okay.
I will try, I will try.
Good.
Okay.
Uh, I guess finally on yours, Ina, the twenty-five percent employee benefits, is that comparable to other cities or towns that have their own police and fire departments or whatever it is that we have, twenty-five percent?
Absolutely, yeah. Public employees, uh, that are part of the New York State Retirement System and, uh, part of the, um, New York State Health Benefit System.
Okay.
It's very compatible. Um, I will try to answer the, your question on the termination pay schedule, uh, where you see large amounts. So some of these amounts are still subject to review and I'm not going to go into details on those. Uh, but when you see four hundred, six hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, those are shocking to us as much as they are to you. So, uh, we're still doing our due diligence and, um, um, that, that, that's the amount at, well, what, what, uh, they're recorded at right now. So, um, to, um, address your six hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, um, question. So that's the increase in what we're required to pay for the, um, police pension plans. That's not just for the active employees, that's also paying into the plan that pays to the retirees, right? Um, I don't have those invoices in front of me, but that's, um, actually in the budget. And the actual contribution for that plan, I believe, is over four million dollars. So.
Um, I, I think maybe we need to get some better negotiating in the next contract. It is just, we can't live this way. Uh, it's just too much money. Um, my other question before my minutes are up was about salaries, but are you going to come back to that later and I'll, I'll come back? Are you going to talk about salaries?
Um.
No, we weren't going to talk about salaries this evening.
Okay, I'm just going to say this quickly then. By looking at the salaries, I see several nine percent increases. And I'll tell you where I see what department, city manager, deputy city manager, executive assistant, city manager, comptroller, deputy comptroller, corporation council and deputy council. Now, I know some of those positions are new, I'm not sure why, and some have been eliminated. But, for example, the city manager and the corporation council and the comptroller salaries are going up by nine percent. The average in the workplace is two or three percent, so I don't know, since we are so broke, why we're giving away that amount of money. And in those six or seven positions that I mentioned, we're going from six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That's a fifty percent increase. That, that's, how, how, why?
I think my salary has not increased. I believe my salary shows.
For next year.
No, I, I make a hundred and ninety right now. So, and that was done in, during last year, so that salary is not being increased. Um, the comptroller's salary did increase because she took on more responsibility. All of the financial departments that is under this, that, that is in the city now reports to the comptroller, which they should have done all, at all times. The, uh, corporation council, that's an estimate in the budget. The deputy city manager, that's an estimate. And what was the other one?
Uh, comptroller, corporation council, the deputies and the executive assistant, I understand is, you know, now zero. But Donna, actually, I took those numbers from, directly from the budget where it said one seventy-eight to one ninety, so.
Yeah, but that's what I make now.
Yeah, all right, so I'm just saying I took them from the budget, so maybe those numbers should be looked at. But the bottom line of six hundred to nine hundred, that's, that's a pretty big increase.
Well, first of all, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, one of the things about the budget, the way it was adopted, it shows you what it was adopted and maybe it, like, for my salary, that is not an increase for me at all. There is no increase in there for me. Um, the, yeah, w- we also are increasing part-time salaries because people have been making well under minimum wage. And so where we're bringing in professionals to do professional jobs, we do pay them accordingly. Um, some of the people that, some of the positions we're looking at, we're looking for a higher quality individual. And so, example, the comptroller, the comptroller was, she had one salary and she had one department under her and now all of the financial departments are under her. She has a lot more responsibility. Um, and like I said, the corporation council, that's an estimate. And, and where we, the positions are vacant, we're looking at just what the, what the market rate goes for to get the talent that we're looking for.
All right, and Donna, I would say that I am happy with this budget in the sense that it is the most transparent that we've ever seen. I understand that these big numbers don't have too much to do with the present administration and certainly nothing to do with you. It's the past and finally, maybe we'll be able to get a handle on some of it.
Eileen, that's your time.
Well, Eileen, what I will say is that, that is our goal. That's why we're trying to be very transparent. I've always said from the day I got here, I was going to be transparent and to show where everything is. And believe me, as Ina and I sit down and talk two or three times a day about the budget and actual numbers, we are trying to keep everything in line. So we are out for the residents.
Good.
And thank you again for your compliment.
Thank you.
All right, who's next? Thank you, Eileen. Who's next, Dave?
Uh, William Notall.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say as a former department head for the city of Long Beach, I was always impressed when the city comptroller was able to put together a budget of this size and knew everything about each line item. A job well done by the current city comptroller on this year's budget. However, recently, the city council voted on hiring two bankruptcy consultant firms at a cost of about one point five million dollars. The city council talks about the possibility of bankruptcy. The city manager has submitted a proposed budget which includes a six point three percent tax increase, which she says is in part due to pension costs, contractual raises and increases in part-time salaries. A proposed budget includes adding several high-salary exempt employees at a cost of about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus benefits. It also includes substantial raises for certain, but not all exempt employees at a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. Today, I'm told that the city manager plans on giving grade changes after July first, which I do not see listed in the proposed budget. As much as I would like to see CSEA employees getting a well-deserved grade change, it should have been included in this proposed budget so the public can see the additional costs. I would like to see who the employees are that are receiving these grade changes, what the grade changes are. And I'm asking if you are prepared to itemize the grade changes and post them prior to the city council voting on this proposed budget. I thank you all for your time.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
I can, Donna, I can take over the grade changes, uh, question. Um, so, um, um, I, um, very sorry, not, uh, aware or prepared to talk about, uh, some, some, um, future grade changes, um, that, uh, might take place in, uh, next fiscal year. Uh, what was worked on and what was built into this budget is a great change for exactly one employee in a general fund. And that's very, uh, transparent and that you could see by, um, uh, by looking at the staff schedules. So that's one employee was the great change. Um, there were several changes in a water and sewer department funds, uh, great changes. And there, I'm not an expert, I cannot, uh, maybe, uh, Joe Fabrezes on a call, maybe he can, um, address it better. But you need to have cer- in order to operate those plans, you need to have certain employees in, in appropriate positions. Otherwise, the state will not qualify our water plant and sewer plant. So those, uh, there were several retirements during last couple of years and those great changes in those, uh, departments in, uh, water and sewer, uh, they are just to align what needs to be done, um, as per the state requirements um, to whatever staff we have, um.
Yeah, you know, if you don't mind, um, yes, as far as the, uh, water treatment plant, they're currently, um, operating a twenty-four-seven facility and they only have, um, nine personnel. So we did put in the budget one additional plant operator that's in the budget. Um, and as far as the wa- waste water treatment plant, they're currently utilizing only eight operators to run twenty-four-seven facility. So, um, we actually requested the two plant operators we put in the budget. Um, however, um, we agreed to just have one for now. You know, since the facility is going to be closing in three to four years. Um, but they're, right now, they're running on a skeleton crew, basically, you know, and they're putting in, there's a lot of overtime being, um, being incurred. So we did put in one employee in the water treatment plant and one in the waste water plant. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, as far as it relates to a hundred thousand dollar increase in, uh, exempt salaries, I am not aware of it. I thought I knew this budget pretty well, but apparently not. Um, so, no, um, there is no, um, hundred thousand dollar increase in, in exempt salaries. Um, and, uh, that's probably, um, what I can readily answer right now. Again, uh, the question was loaded. Um, I don't know if, uh, anyone else took notes and wants to address the other parts. Uh, but, um, I'd encourage you to email your questions to me and, um, we'll, we'll post the questions, um, with your name. and, um, we'll, we'll post the questions, um, with your name and the answers to your questions as well.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next, Dave?
Uh, next is Kevin Heller.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Heller.
Good evening. I think what I'm about to say is probably reflected already by Ms. Hesian's comments, um, about the expense, obviously, increasing over the tax cap limit, uh, 6.3% non-homestead and 12.3% plus the beach fees are going up, plus the water fees are going up. If I look at the demographic information, uh, in your, uh, in your budget, I think it's safe to say that's a real burden for, for most residents. I think my cursory view of the budget shows that there are several new exempt employee hires and non-contractual pay raises, which to me doesn't seem prudent shortly after we voted to spend a half, one and a half million dollars on taxpayer money on retainer fees for structuring experts, whose recommendations could materially impact the budget. Um, I would ask that the city council vote against this budget and ask for the amendment, ask for amendments there too. And I would recommend a budget that reflects, then also only implements in practice, contractually obligated changes pending the complete review by M3 partners. So that's my comment on the budget. The one question I do have, um, I'm having a little trouble with the math, I have to admit. In terms of the revenue side, the, um, 2021 adopted budget versus the 2022 proposed uh, budget for real property tax revenue. Um, do you have a general sense of how much of that is reflective of the percentage increase? Um, or is there anything built in for an increase in the assessed values? You have provided some backward-looking five-year trend on full valuation, but is any of that reflective of uh, an increase in, uh, tax assessment? Or is it simply last year's sort of tax roll multiplied by the proposed increase?
Ray Flammer, um, Ina is on. If we move Ray up. And while he's moving up, Mr. Heller, um, M3 and O'Melvene has the budget and they have gone through it as well. Um, and if you could send where you are seeing where individuals are getting large increases, and exempt employees, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's there. It's, you know, city manager's office goes up by 16%. Comptroller's office goes up by 22%. Purchasing goes up by 75%. Corporate council's office goes up by 15%. And, and I'm not saying whether or not these are deserved pay raises. I'm just saying, given the situation that we're in, which is a heavy fiscal burden on the residents of Long Beach, perhaps it's best not to implement those until we have this long-term review. And see where, and see where we come out.
I understand what you're saying, but some of, like, I, I, as I stated before, the budgeted amount that was there for a city manager at 178 was, was the budget last year. I make 190 right now. So there is no increase. It's just a difference in the budgets. It's not the actual.
Well, there are a number of new hires and I listed a whole bunch of departments that had increases as well. So.
Right. We, we, I, I answered those, but we will put all of those in writing. And so that everyone could see the new hires and the, the actual new hires would be the Deputy City Manager, the IT Director and, and the HR Director. That's all the new hires. The Corporation Council is a vacant position right now.
Donna, there is also procurement and contract manager.
Contract administrator, which could pay for itself because that is somebody that would be looking at our contracts, making sure we're collecting all our revenue, which is not currently done, and making sure that we extend contracts and, and we do different, we do different, uh, procedures on our procurement to start saving the city money. And so what I do want everybody to know that we did, we really scrubbed this budget and this budget has been looked at by M3 and O'Melvene. Even with the increase in the number of people that we are trying to bring in as additional help, O'Melvene and M3 were aware of that as well. So, yeah, we will, we will a- answer any additional questions about that in writing.
Yeah. And I think just a comment, you know, the 25% of our budget going to, um, you know, fringe, fringes and things like that. And I understand it's comparable to New York State, but I would say, you know, all of New York State's kind of in trouble when it comes to the tax burden on, on residents. So, you know, to, to the extent that Long Beach has a voice in that, I think we ought to be advocating for, um, long-term changes.
That's your time, Mr. Heller.
I, I would agree with you and we are, we did say that we're going to start looking into that.
Thank you.
I, I would just conclude by saying that, um, percentage increases in departments is not necessarily reflective of pay increases. It's also reflective of additional or, or changes in headcount. So it's not a, a pure relationship that assumes everybody's getting an increase.
Okay, who's next, Dave?
Next is Mary Falls Savitch.
I would just, Ray Flammer is on as well. I didn't know if we wanted to let him chime in.
Good evening. Uh, the assessed back values did go up. All the new construction was added to the roll. We had about a net increase of about $25 million worth of value on the assessed roll this year. And that is included within the tax calculation. Does that answer the question?
All right.
Yeah.
This is Councilman Delory. I think that, that answered, uh, Mr. Heller's question on, on the.
Yeah, I think he just sent a message saying, yes, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Ray. All right. Welcome back, Mary.
I think that was a mistake, John. I didn't.
What, welcoming you back?
No, no. Well, that too, but, um, no, I, I must have hit that by mistake. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
All right. Thanks, Mary. All right. Who's next, Dave?
Uh, next is Kathleen O'Leary.
All right. Welcome back, Kathleen.
Thank you. I understand that this budget is necessary, but, uh, I think, you know, the city needs to understand 6.3% is coming on the heels of 21% that came before it. The one piece that I, uh, I'm not sure that I heard it correctly at the last meeting, but I'm going to go over it. Maybe you can tell me if I heard it right. In terms of the beach park lack of money for this past summer, we are, we are raising taxes because of that, but we're owed money from the state or the stimulus for it. I can't see doing that because once the taxes go up, they never come down. So why is that, is there a way to do it so that it's not included in the tax increase? And with the, um, numbers getting better, and I think it's unpredictable, but, you know, things do look like they're heading toward, uh, them letting us open it up 100%. Shouldn't that affect the amount of, um, taxes being charged to make up for last year?
Hmm. Um, I think that, um, um, I, I actually mentioned it and it's in one of the slides. If we are between now and, um, when the budget is presented for the vote, if, um, uh, we, with the number of, um, the percentage of the capacity, and the estimate of what the state will allow us will be increased to 100%. Like you said, that will allow us to project higher revenues for the beach park. So that will in turn allow us to, um, decrease the necessity of the tax levy of $50.5 million. So far, my preliminary review of the increase in the capacity, it could generate as much as $600,000 in revenue. So that would be a considerable decrease in, um, the tax levy and the tax rates that, that the city will propose in its budget. And it's now going to be a situation where it's going to go in a budget and then they will allow us, um, 100% capacity, but your taxes are going to be already set at the higher rate amount. No, uh, this is a very dynamic process. We are, um, we, we, we are in contact, uh, with the state, um, uh, authorities. And we both lobbying and gathering information. And we are hoping that this will result in, um, amendment to the proposed budget as it's proposed right now.
Okay. And is there, um, money coming that's going to, um, state or federal money? That's going to help us offset the losses at the beach last year?
So, uh, we are, um, we, we're scheduled to receive about $3.6 million. Um, and, and that's meant to, um, to, um, to, to, to lessen the burden of, uh, what we, um, experience in terms of revenue laws, um, with COVID. However, it doesn't make us whole.
Okay.
So, um, it, it's obviously not, not, um, you know, it's a large sum of money, but it does not make us whole.
Okay. Thank you. Great job.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathleen, I also, um, thank you for your comment. I also want to say we are lobbying hard to get additional funding into the city. And we have been talking to the state. Ina and I had a in-depth conversation last week with the state. The state also has come out and reviewed our, but they have our budget now, which they are reviewing. So we have been lobbying hard to get additional funding into the city.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kathleen. All right, Dave, who's next?
William Depper.
Okay.
Yes, I, I was just wondering, um, in your proposed budget, um, do you possibly see any cuts coming in like the HUD program and housing program that you don't have money set aside to possibly help people with housing costs? And also, it was like this time last year that Long Beach, um, terminated a lot of the employees. And do you see it coming this year? Or a lot of people also retiring and more big payouts?
Um, first I want to say the, last year, when the, the people were laid off, the majority of those people that wanted to come back, um, have come back. They were laid off because of COVID. And so an agreement was made with the union is that as people retired or people left, that we would offer them jobs so that they can come back to the city. I don't know if the union president for CSEA is on, but he has actually come on several times and said that most of his people are back. And so we have said that we are not looking to lay off anyone. We are trying to streamline in a sense that we are more, that the city runs more efficiently.
Okay. And I will try to answer your question about, uh, housing, uh, funds. What, what we're discussing right now are the three operating funds of the city. So I guess maybe your question is, um, uh, would be better addressed to the Long Beach Housing Authority, which is a separate entity from the city of Long Beach.
No, I said, if you see any foreseeable cuts to that program, is there anything here in Long Beach, the budget, that could possibly compensate that or make up for that loss?
Loss of what?
Like cuts in the housing programs in the HUD, uh, you know, HUD being cut, um.
But HUD programs are not running through the city operating funds. They're run through the Long Beach Housing Authority. We are not in receipt of any HUD funds.
Okay, then you're not understanding. I'll address it with the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Sure.
That's it.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Depper.
Mary's hand just didn't go down. She doesn't have a question.
What's that?
Mary's hand is still up, but she doesn't have a question.
I keep, I keep lowering it and it keeps coming back up.
Okay. All right. Who's next, Dave?
Uh, Monique Powell.
Okay.
Uh, this might help, William. Um, on our website, there is a program for, from the Nassau County Community Development Corp to help those in assistance of at least four months of rent in arrears. Uh, and the information is made public on, uh, the website is on the community development page as well as some of our social media outlets.
And just to be clear, Monique is, uh, Director of Community Development for the city.
All right. Thanks, Monique.
Thank you, Monique. So that's just to read, to read, those funds, they're not part of the Long Beach operating funds and this budget that we're discussing.
Correct.
Right. All right, Dave, who's next?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. So we will leave the, uh, hearing open because, uh, we will do this again. Before we move on to the regular agenda, you know what? Let's, uh, take a three-minute bio break since we've been on for two and a half hours. So I got 9:27. Let's reconvene at, uh, 9:31. And, uh, so everybody can run off to the, to the potty or whatever they might need to do before we get into the next phase.
Just make sure both cameras and microphones are off, please.
Yeah. So we'll see you in three minutes. Yeah, we don't need to hear a lot of flushing. Okay. All right. Everybody's trickling back in, so we just need to confirm we got Karen back. Nope, Mike just ran off the screen. There's Karen. There's Mike reaching down into the fridge. All right, you ready, Mike? Ready to go?
Yeah, I was getting a low battery and I forgot to plug in my uh laptop. So yep, I'm ready.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the agenda.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes for prior meeting, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Who will make a motion to approve?
I will.
Second? Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, we've already called items two, three, and four. Um, item five is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses, business regulations, building code, electrical code, and plumbing code. Hearing has been held on this item already. Item six is ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park. The hearing has been held on this item already. Item seven is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the general fund budget.
Okay, I'm gonna assume that's Ina. You muted, Ina.
All right, did you want to make a comment?
I'm muted.
There you go.
That's Ina and maybe Ron also can chime in on that. Um, so the city had a bike um auction um couple of weeks ago. And the collections of this uh bike au- auctions um are now um to be designated towards a certain purpose uh within the police department budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, this fiscal year. Um, Ron, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I just don't have a uh camera, I guess. So I don't know if Dave's gonna turn that on, but I don't need one.
Okay, so maybe if you can talk elaborate a little bit more on the auction and what was sold and who um who, who was um facilitating the auction and
Sure, I'll take you. So what happened uh a couple of weeks ago, uh, the net, the uh police department had a uh bicycle auction. Uh, these are bicycles that are either uh recovered stolen bicycles that nobody claims or found bicycles or just derelict bicycles that are collected over uh time around the city. Uh, usually, once a year, uh, the city will have a uh, an auction. This particular year, they hadn't done an auction in well over two years. Uh, John Bendo, uh, president uh of the city council was our auctioneer. I assisted him, as did uh several other members of the police department. It was extremely successful uh um uh auction. A lot of people came out uh to buy bicycles, a very lively crowd, and uh I believe, you know, I don't recall the exact dollar amount, it was seven thousand and change.
Yeah, it was seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars.
Right, so it was a very successful auction uh that we had. So that money uh we are asking in the police department to reallocate it back to the police department because uh we don't have enough uh, uh, there are a, a lot of uniform items that we need to kind of fill in, several of which are badges and uh the uniforms for our summer specials. And it's uh really would come at no expense to, to the city. And we would be able to fill the gap there, so with a uniform and other items that the city would otherwise have to pay for.
All right, uh, any questions from the council members? All right, um, any from the public, Dave?
Nope, not at this time. Oh, wait a minute, I have Allison Blanchett.
Okay.
Go ahead, Allison. Allison?
Hi, thank you. Um, I sent an email off to the city council. I'm not sure if you all received it, but I was wondering if you could consider other opportunities with this money. Um, I understand that Police Commissioner Walsh may need some things for his department. However, I just cannot stress enough how horrible it is that the city would put police uniforms ahead of bicycle, pedestrian, and all traffic safety opportunities. For, you know, seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, the city could be funding some incredible traffic safety initiatives or programs. Um, one of the most like glaring high costs of unsafe streets are seen in the cost of emergency responses and legal expenses due to lawsuits. You know, just refresh yourself, look back at the draft budget. Um, there is a lot of crash prevention activities that could happen that could save this city a lot more. I just think that the use of seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars on police uniforms is not the most of like effective use of money. And to me, it just suggests a, a negative public health and safety message to the residents and visitors that, you know, a, a city would fund uniforms and not pay for the uniforms out of the budget and then just completely disregard traffic safety programming. Um, while the rest of the world is looking at vision zero, city of Long Beach is continuing this zero vision. I'm asking that you not vote to do this and to, you know, come, just have a conversation about alternative uses for bicycle au- auction revenue. Um, and I hope that com- the commissioner would agree that traffic safety, the, the consequences of unsafe streets, the costs associated with it are just astronomical. I think we can't afford that, but I th- I'm pretty sure that you could somehow afford police uniforms from somewhere else in the budget. So, that's all. Thank you.
So, Mr. Bendo, if you'd just like me to
Yeah, I was just wondering. You were looking like you were gonna say, but I wasn't sure.
Just quickly respond to that. So, so uh, these are not uh police, traditional police uh uh uniforms, just to keep everybody informed. These are for our summer specials. Uh, the summer specials are paid uh uh, I believe, just below minimum wage or just at minimum wage. We provide them with their uniforms. Um, the uniforms from last year uh did not come back in a condition where we could actually use them again, so the expenses were much higher. Uh, and uh many of the shields that were there were broken. Um, and so we needed to replace them. Um, and they, the summer specials also do a lot of pedestrian and bicycle safety, not only on the boardwalk, but also do uh dealing with parking conditions and things like that to increase the safety around the Ocean Beach Park area. So um, these items are indirectly going to help keep the city much, much safer uh as well. So I, I appreciate uh Allison's uh comments. And uh, you know, I would love to entertain uh some ideas of hers. I know she worked with Mike Corbett quite a bit in our traffic safety, uh, uh, excuse me, the CEO of our traffic department. Uh, but uh, if she has ideas where we could be better and better addressing some of her concerns, I would, I would love to have that conversation with her some other time.
And, and this is John McNally. I would just add that this is not a, a zero-sum game. There, there are other funding lines for, for programs of which Ms. Blanchett speaks. Um, you know, we, we obviously COVID over the past year uh was, was not a very traditional year in terms of what kind of programs we, we've been able to implement. Um, but we think the year ahead will be able to accommodate more things along those lines. So um, again, not a zero-sum game.
Do I have another thirty seconds?
Twenty-four seconds.
Okay, um, thank you, um, Police Commissioner Walsh um for that thoughtful response. And I always appreciate talking with Sergeant Cor- Corbett. Um, and to McNally's point, um, yeah, so during COVID, we've seen an incredible rise in the use of bicycles and an incredible rise in walking. And no rise in open streets, no rise in programming, education, PSA is nothing. Whereas the rest of the world is doing circles around the city of Long Beach in concerns, in concern, in regards to traffic safety.
And that's your time.
So, okay, I'm just gonna ask the council to please table this or don't, don't vote on this, please. Let's have a conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Allison. All right, anyone else, Dave?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, Leah Tozer.
Okay.
Hi, guys. I just wanna say that was uh, you know, well-presented budget and uh good job there. I wanted to just ask that, um, you know, for public, private partnerships where there could be some, you know, money coming into the city, like maybe, you know, the marina where there was an RFP that was out and was granted. Are you guys looking into that kind of stuff? Or is that like?
Leah, this, this, we're, we're talking about uh revenue from the bicycle sales. I think your question sounds like a good and welfare. Yeah, okay. Sa- save it for good and welfare in a few minutes.
Thank you, buddy.
Okay, bye. All right, Dave, uh, anyone else?
Uh, no, that was it.
Okay, let's move on to the
Give me one, one second here. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, um, item eight is re- resolution authorizing publication for hearing, excuse me, for hearing of a local law amending subpart C of related acts relating to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levied limit established in general municipal law section three C. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be held May eighteenth at seven PM. Item eight is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. This item is also for publication only. Hearing will be held May eighteenth at seven PM. Onto the voting. We've already voted on items one through four. We'll start with item number five, which is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations, building code, electrical code, and plumbing code. Excuse me. Who wants you to just move the adoption of this item?
I will, and God bless you.
Thank you. Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes, and thank you all for the hard work you put into this.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
You were muted, Karen.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. President Bendo.
Yes.
Item six is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park. Who introduces move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Uh, I just wanna point out that it's still twenty-five cents a day to get onto the beach with a family pass. So, yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the general fund budget. Excuse me. Who introduces move the adoption of this item? Oh, wait, excuse me. Who wants you to just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
No.
Second?
Who'd you get as the first?
I got, um, what did I get? Uh, McGinnis, Karen McGinnis.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, voting, Councilmember Delory.
Thank you for the hard work and the great transparency, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandell. Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Uh, yes, and perhaps uh our police commissioner could have a chat with Ms. Blanchett about some of our ideas and some other funding sources.
Item A is resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending subpart C of the related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section three C. Who wants you to just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item nine is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. Who wants you to just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so on to good and welfare. I think um most people know the drill, but three minutes and uh let's see who's first.
First is Judy Vining.
Okay.
Judy, unmute yourself.
I think I did, yes.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, I couldn't get on before and it's probably a good thing. What I need to say to you guys is I know that in terms of the uh, off-street parking variance, the vote was in terms of that only. But what we're here to be is a resource for you, and it's not about a yes or a no. It's about how municipalities in the state of New York where there is preemption can use local zoning and mercantile licensing fees and regulations to control what may or may not be an oversaturation of alcohol. My concern, of course, on behalf of Long Beach aware, is that we are adding yet another place in a well, well serviced area to sell alcohol. Also, how are we going to police it? Um, are the police department gonna decide which ice cream cone to sniff or to taste or to whatever? So that would be the concern about the product. But the process is that you guys have it in your hands time and time again to decide whether or not to grant or not grant whatever zoning variance is. If your overall vision is that maybe we have enough places in this community to sell alcohol when we have an underage drinking rate that is twenty percent above the state and the county. That's all. That's your decision as a council. Our role is to give you the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. All right, Dave, who's next?
Next is Kevin Heller.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that um, it does seem to me that either by now or very shortly in the future, those adults that wanna get vaccinated will have been vaccinated. And I think in the last year or so, we've learned a lot about the transmissibility of COVID uh in an outdoor setting. So with that all said, I really just wanted to thank you for advocating to New York State to uh have one hundred percent capacity in Long Beach this summer.
Well, thank you, Kevin. It's uh, look, we all got COVID fatigue and we wanna get back to some sense of normalcy in our lives. So uh, um, the science that closed us down is now saying we can open up, so it's time.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, who's next, Dave?
Next is Roy Lester.
Hello?
And his dog.
Um, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You, you know, I, I live in the canals and the other day we had uh, uh, people coming around giving out uh a pamphlet or a flyer about the, the, for lack of a better word, pissing contest between the PBA and the commissioner. And this, it just seems that there's gotta be a way that to be a way that the truth can come out. I don't even know what the truth is. I don't know what's going on. I know a lot of people ask me about it. Is there any way we can have like a public hearing where both parties can, you know, express their dissatisfaction or their grievances and, and the public can basically hear. So we're not relying on stuff from social media or, or flyers that are given out or, you know, people that are giving their side or the other side. I mean, it's, it's just not a good thing for the city to be going through this right now. Um, everybody here loves the police department. I, I also think that from what I've heard about Commissioner Walsh, she's trying to do the right thing. And it's just not good to have this kind of stress and, uh, infighting in a, a, a small town like this. Is there anything you guys can put together where people can, you know, listen to both sides and, and kind of understand the whole concept?
Roy, this is Donna. Um, I did ask the PBA to give me in writing a list of all of their concerns for the no vote. Um, the flyer, at this time, I have not received anything from the PBA. However, I am aware of the flyer that went out. We are looking at their complaints about, and I'll let Commissioner Walsh talk about that, about the defunding of, um, one area, um, no police on the boardwalk, I believe it was. And we're looking at the community plan. And so what we will do is I can't say that we will have a forum where each side will tell. That type of mediation is typically done within, in the compounds of the city. However, we will get information out so that we can compare what the PBA is saying, what is actually happening, and with the community plan. So that is in the works.
All right, but can the community be involved so we know what's going on?
Well, you have the community policing plan and Ron, Commissioner Walsh will talk about that. We will, he will go into that and that will answer a lot of the questions that's on there. Um,
John, it's got to be both sides though.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
The PBA has told you where they stand. And so it's now time for us as the city to make people aware of what is going on and answering their questions. And it's unfortunate that it has gotten to that point, but we are, we, Mr. Walsh, you can speak up, but we are addressing that.
So, um, the first thing I want to say is, uh, I don't look at this as necessarily sides. I am managing a police department and I am, I've been brought here to make changes. And the changes that I'm making do not meet with the agreement of the union, and that's within their right to make that complaint. Uh, one of the things that was in the flyer, Roy, to be very direct with you, is about like, uh, the city manager said, is that about the detective division being slashed and things like, like that. Uh, when I got here, there were four members of our detective division, four, four detectives. Um, I increased that by two. Uh, the question about slashing of narcotics detectives, um, we used to have two that specialized in that. Uh, in an effort to try and make sure that we were the most efficient that we can, instead of having two that specialize in narcotics, we now have all six of our detectives that take narcotics cases. Um, that was, uh, right now, we're also going to be bringing on a detective sergeant as well after the new fiscal budget comes in and re-staffing that. So there are a lot of disagreements with the management and with the things that I'm doing to try and save money and also with the pushing of the community policing plan. I mean, I was doing some analysis today, uh, from June, from January through May of last year, we had about 170 or so, um, don't hold me to the number, but it's going to be put up on the website, uh, community outreaches that were documented in our, um, in our CAD system. The year before, about the same amount. In that exact same time period this year, we're at 4,900 community documented contacts all over the city where the officers are getting out of their car and specifically addressing concerns. So there is a difference of opinion. Uh, it is not, uh, to your term, a pissing match. I'm managing a police department and I will continue to do, do so. And this city will be much better for it. That much I will promise you.
Uh, you seem to be doing a, a good job on that. I just would love it to stop.
I would agree with you. And I'm doing, I met with Mr. Wells, uh, last week. I invited him into my office. We sat down, we had conversations, and I'm fully engaged in trying to continue that dialogue.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Roy. And who's next, Dave?
William Depper.
Okay.
Yes, hi. Um, first, I just wanted to thank, um, the Long Beach Police Department, especially Police Officer Shear, the Desk Sergeant, I forget his name, and Detective Trotter. Uh, someone stole my identity and with their help, as well as Nassau Suffolk Law Services, I was able to, um, find out it was a federal matter. And, um, I, it was great how well everything worked out. I mean, I had to take identity theft protection, but a lot of us seniors are getting targeted. So before someone lets you know, just check to make sure. Also, I was asked to share this. If anyone is having a problem with eviction or foreclosures, they could contact Nassau Suffolk Law Services in Hempstead at 516-292-8100. Because I don't know if any of you know, but at the end of December of last year, a COVID-19 emergency eviction and foreclosure prevention act was passed of 2020. There's two parts of the law of this. So if you have any questions or if you're facing eviction for any reason, just reach out to them. And they said I could share it. And if you're HIV positive, just ask for somebody in the David Project. Uh, that's really all I have to say. But, um, Ina, that was a great presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And who's next, Dave?
Paul Fletcher.
Hey, Paul.
Hey there, John. How are you?
Haven't seen you in a while.
The president? You got to get out on the boardwalk early. Okay, what I wanted to address was the idea of this. Um, as you know, John, a lot of work that I do is with restaurants. I'm a member of the, well, as recently as today, I did a seminar for the New York State Restaurant Association, and I'm also a member of the Long Island Food Council. And one of the things that we have dealt with is alcohol-infused frozen desserts. So to address the concern here really is not founded. It is more of a flavor ingredient than anything else. These are going to be sold in sealed containers. It's an extremely low alcohol content, and there's no more chance of getting a buzz from your ice cream than by having penny aliva vodka. So I can understand people's concern with too much alcohol, but that's really not what this product is about.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. We learned something.
Thank you.
All right.
John. Okay, next is Kate Tormi.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you. I have two things to say. I'm interested in the last comment, and I, I wonder if there's no chance of getting a buzz from it, what's the point? Uh, that's my first statement. But the second one is in regard to Ron Walsh. My experience on the Health and Safety Commission, Commission has been that Ron Walsh has come forward and put together an idea of enhanced communication in the community, and I think it should be embraced. I was delighted by it, and I think a lot of people in the community would be too. I think we have to have enhanced communications in order to make things more palatable in terms of what services we are delivering, et cetera. So I just wanted to put in a vote of confidence as opposed to no confidence as far as Ron Walsh goes. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. Uh, you know what? I'm gonna, because, uh, Commissioner Walsh had said, uh, used a quote, and I, and I went and looked up the context of it. It kind of applies here. You had said that, uh, former President Woodrow Wilson had said, if you want to make enemies, try to change something. Well, there was more to that quote. The full quote was, if you want to, if you want to make enemies, try to change something. You know why it is? To do things today exactly the way you did them yesterday saves thinking. It does not cost you anything. You have acquired the habit. You know the routine. You do not have to plan anything, and it frightens you with a hint of exertion to learn that you will have to do it a different way tomorrow. So I think that applies. Um, so it's all, uh, some growing pains. So anyway, who's next, Dave? Well, it looks like Mr. Hodge.
Well, I, I just wanted to, uh, start off by just, you know, I usually come on and speak about a lot of different items, but a lot of people have been coming to me about my employment and about what happened with the city. So I just wanted to go through a little history really quick. And I just wanted to say that I've always had a great opportunity working for the city. 1989, I started as a rent-a-kid program for Pat McCormick and Angel, uh, and, uh, the Youth and Family Services at age 13, where I would go from the west end to the east end, cutting seniors' grasses and doing all kinds of things for them. And then from there, uh, I started working for the highway department in 1990 and then in 1991, I went into the animal control department and so forth and so on. I've always, I've worked for the city for 23 years and, uh, I've done everything that I was told in all of my jobs that I've had. I've had the pleasure of being the animal warden for the city of Long Beach, had the pleasure of volunteering and being auxiliary police officer for Long Beach and working in the water distribution and the recreation starting programs and helping to diversify like never before the center with being able to bring programs from the east to west and north. Uh, again, last, during this pandemic, I was feeding hundreds and hundreds of people. Uh, Ms. Donna asked me, uh, what was the center going to do? I spoke to her and you were there, President. And I said, we would like to feed. Right then and there, you directed, uh, I think me and, uh, one of the others, uh, I think it was Ryan at the time, to call the superintendent of schools and we called them. And then, a long story short, we started feeding people and we were feeding 300 and more people a day. Uh, then, uh, shortly, a few months in, I received a letter about switching from the beach department back to the water distribution. And then shortly after that, I received a letter saying that I would be terminated May 22nd. Again, I never refused the job. I've asked for my job many times and I check in with my union president. When Mr. Greg Scott, the union president and the vice president came here and said what was offered was sanitation. I said, uh, I, I took two state tests for animal control. I, I passed both tests, animal warden, animal control officer. I asked, was it a possibility after 23 years? Could I go there? I have a lot of seniority, I have a lot of bumping rights. Could I go there? I was told I would get back to, never, no one never got back to me. No one never told me yes or no, but no one never got back to me. So I would like to, again, just state for the record, that I have 20 through, 23 successful years with the city of Long Beach. And I asked publicly that my employment be returned to me as it was taken away from me. Thank you for this time. I appreciate you. The time is always right to do what is right. Martin Luther King. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James, uh, for your information. I will ask, uh, your union president to give you a call back, um, and to talk to you. It is my understanding that he has, but if he has not, I will ensure that he will give you a call. And what I will have to say at this time, there is no animal warden or animal control position available. It has not been available. Uh, one of the gentlemen that was in animal control, we had two, we only have one. Um, he also was laid off, but he did go to sanitation. So I will, in fact, ask Mr. Mooney to give you a call tomorrow and talk to you. Uh, and, and as far as all that you have done for the community, I thank you and for your service. Um, but I will have Mr. Mooney give you a call about, um, no one getting back to you. Thank you.
All right, who's next, Dave?
Uh, next is Mary Volasevich.
Are we short this time?
Yeah, I am, I am, I am. I just, I'm still awake. Um, I, I, Commissioner Walsh was on before, and so was Roy Lester. And as you know, I'm president of the Northeast Bay Canal for now. And, um, I just wanted to say, I have heard from people that were annoyed about a car being pulled. I understand the concept that he's trying to do. Um, but you have a very large area here in the east end and the canals, and it's this time of year that we see car break-ins, as much as I put up lock your car, and also, um, people cutting through the canals, going up Neptune, making a left to get to the bridge, and residents alike sometimes going through the stop signs. Several mothers have stopped me to say they're counting the people. So taking that car away did not make them feel comfortable. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. And, um, you know, Commissioner Walsh, if he wants to call me, I, I can definitely give them the names. They, they fly through Boyd, they fly through Carrigan, they fly through Forrester, and it is dangerous for young ones. Um, and children have, especially on the north side of Pine, they have this, um, sense of safety that it's like, you know, the streets are one-way and, well, not on the north side, on the, uh, south side, I'm sorry. Um, but cars, you see them in the morning backing up rather than go to the end of the street. And I'm sorry, you know, if this annoys someone that we're saying this, but there are children that walk by themselves. I have seen them. And they think it's okay. They're looking one way where the car should be coming towards them, but now they're backing up, going the wrong way. And you, I, I, you really need to have someone at, at the school hours with these buses coming through the canals. It's a shortcut, and as it gets warmer, more and more cars come through. And, um, and East School is right there on Neptune. Um, uh, there was a sign finally put up after several bicyclists got hit. My husband, one of them, and that, uh, no turn on red now off of park. So, um, there is concern, um, about that car being pulled. And yes, I have heard from the residents in the canals. So I just wanted to put that out there, and he can call me if he'd like, and we can discuss it further. But there is a need here. So now I'm on record for saying that. Thank you.
And that's your time.
Thank you, Mary. I'll, I'll reach out to you, Mary, okay?
That's fine.
You're on mute, uh, John.
Sorry, who's next, Dave?
That's it. We're done.
That's it. All right. Uh, thank you, everyone. This was a long one. We will have another budget hearing, so, uh, you'll have opportunity to, uh, ask some more questions. And, uh, we will see you at the next one. And have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night, Donna. Good night, Dave. Good night, Liz.
Night, all.
Good night, John.
Good night. Good night.